The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shut-off valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 4th, 2016 Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Villalobos?
Present.
Alderman Newsome?
Present.
Alderman Tempest?
Alderman May?
Present.
Alderman Valco?
Present.
Alderman Taylor?
Present.
Alderman Cunningham?
Present.
Alderman Ziegler?
Present.
Alderman Moiseo?
Present.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for all your blessings upon the city of Waukegan. We thank the Prime Mayor, for the council, all the departments, especially our police department, our fire department. I pray for all of our citizens. We want to have a peace, peaceful city, to pay for peace among us all, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce Susan Griffin, Finance Director for the Village of Lake Bluff and local representative for the Government Finance Officers Association, United States and Canada. She is here tonight to present the City of Waukegan with a very distinguished award. Mr. Griffin, please come to the podium.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Motley and Board of Trustees. As stated, my name is Susan Griffin. I'm Finance Director for the Village of Lake Bluff, but I'm here really as a member of the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm honored to present the award for excellence in financial reporting to the City of Waukegan. This award was established in 1945 to encourage state and local governments to go beyond minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. So not just state financial statements, but additional information to evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, which is every bit as appropriate now as it was back in 1945. To receive this prestigious award, governments must fulfill stringent requirements of the CAFRA program, including providing a management discussion and analysis letter in the document that provides comparison of the previous year's financial statements, and also ten years of statistical data in order for the public credit markets and other financial statement users to assess that the financial health of the city for themselves. So it's not meant to provide them with specific financial help, but allow them to look at the indicators and determine that for themselves. So finally, I want to say that I applaud the board, specifically Mayor Motley and Treasurer Dr. Schwab, for supporting participation in this program. Congratulations to Finance Director Tina Smigalski and the entire finance staff for attaining this achievement. This, I understand, is their hat-trick year, their third consecutive year. So congratulations.
Good job, Tina.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, all the departments in the city work very well together. Our finance department has done a wonderful job. So thank you, Tina, and your staff. A lot of you probably know that I suspended the license of pads today, and I read the letter I sent to Mr. Joe Williams, who's the director. Dear Mr. Williams, you are hereby notified that your business license for Pads Lake County Incorporated is suspended for the following reasons. Waukegan City ordinance, Chapter 14, Section 14131, conducting such licensed activity in such a manner as to constitute a breach of the peace or a menace to health, safety, or welfare of the public or disturbance of the peace and comfort of the residents or the city or upon recommendation of any official charge with approving health requirements on the licensed premises. Section 14, Section 14135, action unauthorized or beyond the scope of license granted. The third charge I filed against them was Chapter 14, Section 14136, violations of provisions of this code applicable to the trade, profession, business, or privilege for which the license has been granted or regulations or laws of the state so applicable. I served this on, I had George Torres file this and serve this on Mr. Williams this afternoon. They had 20 days to respond. They did respond today at 4:30, I believe it was. They responded at 4:30 today. Therefore, pads will be open until the time of the hearing. So they filed for an appeal. They will be open tomorrow. I happen to have a good working relationship with Mr. Williams, and I think we can resolve this issue. As many of you know, last council meeting, we had a number of people complain about the homeless and the pads site in particular. I thought that, you know, we just had to bring this to a head, and hopefully through these correspondence and through our discussions, we can resolve the issues plaguing the pads site and the residents in that area. The next thing, many of you probably don't know, but about three weeks ago, we had a shooting at a tavern in Waukegan called Legits. Two people were shot. I closed that bar. That bar is not going to open until Thursday? Thursday morning. They took a two-week suspension. They are now required to have a police officer, an armed police officer, or security guards present at the bar every day of the week. We had a hearing this afternoon, and I explained to the registered owner of that business the parameters she had to work within. She complied. She signed off on it. So I have to tell you, I will not allow liquor establishments in this community to run rampant and do things that cause concern to me. And certainly, no one's going to be killed in a Waukegan business because they didn't have proper and adequate security. So that's done. Because of the issues with licenses, I had put out a memorandum to all the businesses, all the liquor establishments in Waukegan, and it reads as follows. Dear licensee, holding a liquor license is a privilege, is also a responsibility. Our entire community is dependent upon you, your staff, to keep drunk drivers off the road and minors from purchasing alcohol. Because of the important role you play keeping the residents safe, I am requesting your presence along with a minimum of two guests, preferably fellow owners and managers, to the following mandatory meeting. I will be having a mandatory meeting for all liquor license holders in the City of Waukegan at 10 o'clock in the morning, June 2nd, 2016, at the Genesee Theater. As part of this program, we're going to give free Basset training to all the liquor license holders and their staff. So we've been, we had a busy week this week. As many of you probably know or read, the controversy about the sign-up sheet, the sign-up sheet will now stay up till audience time. So if you want to sign your mother in, your brother, your cousin, your aunt, your uncle, I don't care anymore, sign them in. They can come in. They don't have to be here, because I'm, you know, I'm tired of arguing over frivolous things like that. Okay? So Minutes, Motion to Approve the Regular Minutes of March 21st, 2016, motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, I'm sorry, all's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Resolution, proclamations, appointments? Waukegan Main Street, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Over the next two months, several events will take place in downtown Waukegan that will draw many, many people. Last Wednesday, a meeting was held at the Genesee Theater to organize a downtown cleanup to present the city in the most positive way possible to those attending these events. The discussion started with the intent to have one major cleanup effort. However, the group realized that the cleanup should be ongoing with the initial cleanup focusing on trash collection. As a result, the first cleanup day will be this Saturday, April 9th. Alderman David Villalobos will be the volunteer coordinator. Volunteers will meet at the ACE parking lot at 10:00 a.m. Volunteers will receive garbage bags and gloves donated by ACE Hardware. The next cleanup will be April 23rd. This cleanup will again have trash pickup, but will also focus on cleaning empty storefronts, washing windows, leaf blowing, and power washing entryways and sidewalks. If access to the building is available, we will clean the inside windows and remove any debris. Trash pickup and cleaning storefronts that still receive, requires cleaning will happen May 7th. The week of May 23rd, Diane Hewitt will lead a group to plant flowers. And finally, May 29th, a trash pickup and last-minute details to get the downtown ready for the Memorial Day Parade will occur. After the initial cleanup, Waukegan Main Street will be responsible for organizing future trash cleanups. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Resolution Closure of the Amsteads for Vet Fest from June 29th to July 3rd, 2016. What this is, is Vet Fest was supposed to be over the Memorial Day weekend. The promoter and the sponsor asked us to change the dates because they hadn't signed one of the, one of the acts. We renegotiated the contract, and as part of the contract, we're going to move the closure of the Amsteads to the June 29th, July 3rd date. Would you please read the resolution?
Resolution, Amstead Closure, June 29th to July 3rd, 2016. Whereas the City of Waukegan and production company MG Vet Fest LLC closed the Amsteads Highway to help manage the flow of traffic converging to attend Vet Fest 2016, taking place at the Waukegan Lakefront, starting at 9:00 in the morning on Wednesday, June 29th, and ending 5:00 a.m. on Monday, July 4th. Whereas the State of Illinois requires the City of Waukegan and the production company of MG Vet Fest LLC will assume the responsibility and liability involved in the closing of the Amsteads Highway for this purpose. And be it therefore resolved that in suitable ball's copy of this resolution signed by the mayor, city clerk be sent to the permitted office of the Illinois Department of Transportation to, in order to give your authorization for this closure dated this fourth day of April 2016.
Motion by, any questions? Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next proclamation, National Service Recognition Day. Please read that.
Whereas service to others in a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, as whereas the national countries are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism is a cost-effective strategy to meet counties, and whereas national service expands economic opportunities by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership ability for those who serve. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas a corporation for national and community service shares a priority with city and county officials nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, cities of service, and mayors, and county officials across the country for the Mayor and County Recognition Day for National Service on April 5th, 2016. There it be resolved that Wayne Motley, Mayor of Waukegan, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2016, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community and thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities dated this fourth day of April 2016.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Newsome. All's in favor of the resolution? Aye. Opposed? Resolution passes. Community reports, Alderman Moiseo, please.
Thank you. Just carry, just carry, committee event tonight. Item A, Adoptas presented ordinance approving zoning calendar 2487. Text amendments to Section 13.2, redefining lot line front. Petitioner, City of Waukegan, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
You skipped one.
Villalobos?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Item B, Adoptas presented ordinance approving zoning calendar 2488. Text amendments to Articles 8 and 13 regarding inline retail developments. Petitioner, City of Waukegan, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Item C, Adoptas presented ordinance approving zoning calendar 2489. Map amendment from R8, General Residence to M-CR, Marine Commercial Recreation. Petitioner, City of Waukegan, located at 0 East Seahorse Drive, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Your Honor, could you explain this?
That is, that is the Larson and City of Waukegan deal that we have been working on for a part of, what, 16 years or 10 years or something like that? That's just the ordinance.
What that is, is we traded four acres of property with Larson Marine and rezoned their property as part of the agreement. That's what that is.
Aye. Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Item D, Adoptas presented an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2490, preliminary and final plan of the Lakehurst 300 resubdivision. Petitioner, Arnold Azakian, if I didn't pronounce it, I'm sorry. Lakehurst Investments LLC, located at 300 Lakehurst Drive, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, I thought I had read in the addition, in the initial, that if the, if the three properties, the three outlots on the roadway were to be developed, that the business that is currently exists there would no longer operate in the same fashion. Is that not true?
There's a revised version.
Yeah, that is true.
So they can still operate?
Not, not to the capacity.
I'm saying, because they're going to lose almost half the parking lot.
Yeah, they will.
So by, I mean, like how, so they'll have to be relicensed, or?
It's by square footage.
Okay. Just trying to understand the proposal.
Right now, they can put 1,143 people in the building.
Okay.
It's going to be cut because of this, because they'll be losing those parking spaces.
Okay. Because obviously, we all know that's a major issue. Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I, you know, I'm going to be honest, I have a lot of concerns with this whole deal out there, and I really should hold off and talk to the Alderman about this, but I don't want to hold this up. One of the deals is, this is the old, for both, people who don't know, this is the formerly service merchandise building, correct?
Sundance Saloon right now.
But former service merchandise building. The reason I say that is because a lot of the, a lot of the zoning that's out there was based on the old service merchandise building. It just crossed over to Sundance when they bought it. So my question now becomes, we're subdividing that frontage lot for them. When we, and I remember this vividly because this was part of my freshman year as an Alderman, a lot of that parking area for that building was for service merchandise, and we debated about this a long time. They needed more parking. Now we're subdividing that. But the, but the, the, the old, now the current Sundance has a lot more people going in there, a lot more usage than, than the old service merchandise building. Now we're taking away the parking. So I'm a little confused as to why we are subdividing this for that frontage piece in one of the, I think, the, from an aesthetic look at Lakehurst, everything is all in the back, parking in the front. It's consistent with malls throughout the country. Now we're asking, allowing this person to build some up right up front by the street of Lakehurst, Lakehurst Road. So that's where the confusion is coming in at. I mean, what is going there? Is there an idea that you have that's going to take away the aesthetics of the rest of that whole Fountain Square? And that's why I'm a little concerned.
Steve, are you here, Sabrin? Steve Sabrin here?
It was, the petitioners here.
Yeah, petitioners here. You want to come to the mic, sir?
And before he comes up, is this the, the investment company or the developer who we hired to really build up the Fountain Square? Is that their project?
Shaw Development. Is this their project? Shaw Development is selling, is in conjunction with this project. You want to go ahead and explain it?
This is very simple. We've discussed it. This is prime street front retail, which we're subdividing for potential retail use, which is in line with whatever the Fountain Square subdivision requires. I, I don't, I realize the situation, the question you raise about the parking, which we will abide by the parking regulations. That does take us down on the parking and the capacity, but that's, that's already been discussed and that's accepted, that's agreed upon. I don't, what is your direct concern that you may have?
My direct concern is parking. That has always been the issue for us. And are you looking at putting a strip mall there? Are you looking at, I mean, what's, what's the retail? I don't, sir, don't get me wrong, you might have discussed this with other Aldermen, but this is the full, the full body now, and sometimes we don't get all of that discussion that was in committee. So that's why I'm asking, sir.
I would love to answer your questions. Yes, we're cutting off a 2.5 acre portion, and this is off a total lot of gross 10-acre lot, out of which probably close to 45% is currently a lawn. So basically, that is not, that is not parking space. So after the redevelopment, which obviously will take a long time to do, you're taking away some parking lot, but you're also adding additional parking lot to a section where it's currently just a lawn. So we're anticipating a total loss of about 25% parking capacity, which is, like I said, accepted in, as a reasonable business decision. Those street front outlots have a lot more value to the block, to Fountain Square, to us as the ownership, and probably to the whole community. Those are looking to be retail outlots, possible restaurant outlots, potentially hotel outlot, which is right across the street from Sprinkle Suites, which the idea of everything being in the back, I don't know, actually, that is the, huh? That is across the street from Sprinkle Suites, yes, the hotel.
You got parking. Alderman?
And, and that's fine. So I just want to make sure, Mayor, I guess this might be a question, not only for you, but for Russell, for, this is something we're going to be doing at Fountain Square from this point on, because all those, I'm sorry, sir, this is not a, because all of those lots have the potential to be subdivided.
They do. And you know what, Alderman? We, when we had discussions with this gentleman, we knew of the parking, especially me, because I'm, I'm the number one guy that had an issue with that. What this does, this will add three new businesses, therefore widening our tax base. We did have discussions about the limitations now on parking for Sundance. It'll be, it'll be cut down by 25%. 1,140-some space, I think, is available now. We'll cut that by 25%. He's agreeable to that. There will be adequate parking in the three, three sublots that are going into place there. There are, there will be adequate parking there. He's agreed to reduce his parking capacity in favor of building three new storefronts.
And those potential subdivisions and developments, once they come up, they are still due to appear in front of this hearing for approval.
And I do understand that, but I guess, Mayor, you know, if we go to the, if we go to the south of there, the ways our buildings are, most of them are in the back. So as we did on Green Bay and Grand, allow, start allowing people to build in the front of those lots, is that something we're going to be moving toward for Fountain Square? If it is, and that's fine, but I'm just saying, the aesthetics of what we had Fountain Square for, that was our gem, and that's, I think, it might take away, and I don't know. That's something I think we need to discuss.
I have to tell you, I've been in many, many discussions with the owners of that property, and it looks, it looks to me like that's what is what can happen out there. They are going to start building along the Lakehurst Drive. They are going to start building there. The last two, the last two investors who came before me and Russ and Noel were interested in putting businesses on, on the driveway, the drive itself, as opposed to in the back. As you know, right now, the hotel's coming in the backside.
Right.
So the new businesses want to go in front of the hotel along the corridor. They have better access from the road.
Okay.
So that seems to be the trend.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alderman Villalobos? Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye. Item E, Adoptas presented an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2492. Conditional use permit for a daycare center. Petitioner, PR, Amherst Lake LLC, Ron Finch, located at 1411 South White Oak Drive, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye. Item G, adopt as presented, an ordinance approving zoning counter 2493. Approval of the 2016 zoning map, petitioner City of Waukegan, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye. Item G, adopt as presented, an ordinance approving zoning counter 2494. Conditional use permit for a car wash, petitioner Orlando C.L.S., 3375 West Grand LLC, located at 3375 Grand Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye. Item H, adopt as presented, an ordinance approving zoning counter 2495. Conditional use permit for an auto repair, petitioner Abreu Lobos, 3375 West Grand LLC, 3375 Grand Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye. And the last three are all vacations for the Park District. Item I, adopt as presented, an ordinance approving zoning counter V-1-16. Vacation of Jensen Court, petitioner Waukegan Park District, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye. And item K, adopt as presented, an ordinance approving zoning counter V-3-16. Vacation of West Alley, petitioner Waukegan Park District, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye. And item K, adopt as presented, an ordinance approving zoning counter V-3-16. Vacation of West Alley, petitioner Waukegan Park District, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye. And that is all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Alderman Newsome, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety, met this evening, we have two items. Item A, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to execute an addendum extending an agreement with contact MSI Company, first executed February 4th, 2010, which provided alarm monitoring and wireless network systems. This addendum will extend the terms of the agreement for a period of six years, starting July 1st, 2016, through and including June 30th, 2020, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Ziegler. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Item B, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials
be authorized to draft an ordinance restricting parking on Adelphi Avenue, east and west sides, from Granville Avenue north to the Dead End, and on Granville Avenue north side, from Adelphi Avenue west to a point of 175, 175 feet west thereof, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Newsome. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
That is all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham, please.
Authorize proper city official to settle fire department workers' compensation claim. Claim number C-64514-00925-01, for an amount not to exceed $81,186.75, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Thank you. There is no old business, reports and communications. Tina, are you here? Tina Smigalsky? Would you please step up and explain this, please? It's, um, City of Waukegan tax year 2015 equals eyes assessed valuation, $941,513 and, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. $941,513, $258,000.
How much? The purpose of that is just to read that into the record. That's the equalized assessed valuation released by the clerk's office, and it's .01% higher than the prior year.
.01?
Right.
That's pretty good.
But it's up.
Yeah, .01.
Right.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Uh, a new business, item A, approval of payroll dated April 1st, 2016, in the amount of $1,439,755.54. Final payout dated April 1st, 2016, in the amount of $1,705,75020. Local 150 shoe allowance, March 25th, 2016, in the amount of $23,650. IAFF uniform allowance, April 1st, 2016, in the amount of $41,900. Service, civil service retro pay, dated April 1st, 2016, in the amount of 25, $2,500. Local 150 shoe allowance, April 1st, 2016, in the amount of $360. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated April 4th, 2016, in the amount of $1,334,621. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Item C, approval of raffle sales application for American Cancer Society. Motion by Alderman Villalobo, second by Alderman Ziegler. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item D, approval of the annual misericordia Jelly Belly Candy Days fundraiser for April 29th and April 30th, 2016. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item E, motion to authorize the proper city official to modify an agreement between the City of Waukegan and MG Vet Fest LLC, allowing MG Vet Fest LLC to conduct a lakefront concert by changing the dates to June 29th to July 3rd, 2016. This event will require no funding from the City of Waukegan. Also, as part of this agreement, part of the new contract, they've agreed to pay the City of Waukegan $50,000 for our fireworks. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Item F, motion to authorize a proper city official to draft specifications and advise for, advise for bids, advertise for bids for demolition of the BRP building, 200-300 Seahorse Drive, Waukegan, Illinois. This is the BRP site on the lakefront. Under an executive session, we're going to discuss the purchase of this property. I'm going to ask Tom Hagerty, our Public Works Director, to go out to bid, to see what it would cost to demolish this building, because should we decide to purchase this property tonight, I want the building taken down immediately. Okay? Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
This would just be a voice, wouldn't it? This is a voice vote?
No. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Voice vote. I'm sorry, voice vote. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item G, motion to amend Public Works Committee. Item D, approved by the City Council on December 21st, 2015, as to the financing component only, by rescinding the authorization to amend and approve the, a 2004 master municipal lease and option agreement with the Municipal Service Group Incorporated, and to instead authorize the proper city officials to enter into a capital lease agreement to finance the purchase of trucks and truck outfitting equipment with North States Bank for the principal amount of $1,324,688, at a stated interest rate of 2.75%, and a term of 10 years on the monthly payments of the total life of the lease, valued not to exceed $1,517,000. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Any questions on the motion?
Why are we sending it?
Well, I, I can, we, what we did is we, I talked to the local banks and asked them to bid this out. We got a much better rate. Corporate Council explained to them.
We had an agreement previously approved by the council. To extend the master lease, we have some other equipment with this leasing company as you passed. Subsequent thereto, we got the proposed agreement to be executed by the mayor. It contains certain fees that we did not agree to. We felt like we could do better relative to financing. As long as we could get the same rate, the rate on that document was 2.75. But if you added all the fees that we saw when the document was finally completed, I would suspect that the APR would be over 3.0. So Tina Smigalsky contacted some of the banks, she went out for bid. North States Bank came in at 2.75%, which we had before. They also indicate there are no fees, no hidden fees, and there'll be no escrow fees. So we think it's a much better deal for the City of Waukegan, and it's the same interest rate.
All right. Saving money.
So what we did is we utilized a local bank to, to sponsor this, to loan us this money.
No, and just from a legal standpoint, Steve, we didn't have to go out for bid for this, do we? Because of the...
No, I chose, I asked Tina to go out to bid.
I'm sorry?
I asked Tina to go out to bid for it, so we could see what the market...
Oh, so this was the bid number?
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that.
And Steve is right. When we started looking at this contract, there were just some crazy amounts of fees in there that were hidden in the contract, and so we went out for a straight bid of 2.75, and I'm very pleased that North States Bank picked up the, the contract to do, to do this. Okay, go ahead and roll call.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
There are no ordinance and resolutions. Audience time, madam clerk.
Julio Guzman?
Good evening, Mayor Motley, and members of City Council. My name is Julio Guzman, constituent of Alderwoman Newsome, and member of the Clean Power Lake County Group. I want to thank those of you who attended our Moving Waukegan Forward luncheon last week, on Thursday. It was great to hear Mayor Motley give us an update on the solar panels that are being It was great to hear Mayor Motley give us an update on the solar panels that are being installed in the Waukegan Public Schools. It was also great to hear you make it clear to everybody, President Mayor Motley, your relationship with the various stakeholders. I especially appreciate you saying that you're not an adversary to our group. Thank you very much for that. I hope that the cities seriously consider solar development that contributes to the tax base here in Waukegan and that the city takes action to plan for the future of Waukegan with renewable energy. I look forward to continue this conversation with you, Mayor Motley, and members of City Council. Let's work together so that we can create the green town that we all envision here in Waukegan. Thank you very much.
Clyde Mclemore.
I'm here on behalf of commoner, the beloved ruler, Mayor Motley. As a member of this community and a chair of the Black Lives Matter movement, I am stunned by the mayor's reaction when pressure come. An ass is a donkey. What citizen walked in here on four legs? This was disrespect comment to me and all the residents of Waukegan. I would hate for the Mayor Motley to have the codes to push the button for the nuclear war. A nuclear war, we will be doomed. As elected official, you are subject to pressure and you have, and you have proved, Mayor Motley, that you can't handle pressure. You know, Mr. Motley, when you, when you allow citizens to speak, when you don't allow citizens to speak, you're not, you're on the borderline of the Open Meetings Act. I must comment on the closings of pads. I do, I do a lot of shopping on Grand Avenue, and I will admit, the homeless can be nuisance. They become a problem, but to send the law enforcement in and close it down and put more homeless on, out on the street, where do you expect an eighty-year-old lady who got dementia to go? Or a family with a newborn baby? Ms. Motley, I ask you, will you and your office seek an advocate to help these families with children before your twenty days of putting them out on the street with some kind of placement? Another thing I just heard about their parking lot. I do a event every year at the Sundance, a three-day event. I have over five to eight hundred people come to this city, and I book up the hotels for that event at the Sundance. But you know what? Y'all cutting the parking, and you can't park on that side because a couple of times we have had, when, on the other side of the street, cars have been towed because they'll be at the Sundance, it's no parking in there. Now imagine, I bring eight hundred people in on this event. I got this event going on July twenty-second and twenty-third, twenty-fourth of this year, and I bring these people here. That's money that they, they spend when they go to the restaurants and stuff and everything, but they gotta pay a hundred and fifty dollars to get their car to tow because they parked right across the street in an empty lot that's, that's abandoned. But y'all got signs over there, and there's nowhere to park, and now you go cut the parking lot? This is something to say, you know, you might, my, my crowd might lower down from seven to eight hundred, maybe down to two, three hundred now, and then we will have enough parking.
Ralph Peterson. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. May I just want to address the issue. I want to speak from the perspective of an author and as an artist and as the plaintiff and as a plaintiff in the last First Amendment lawsuit against this city, when this city resorted to sending a uniformed police officer to my home with a threatening, intimidating letter telling me what I should not do, particularly when it wasn't related to city business and the event was being held in part district property. But I want to address the issue of First Amendment, and as an artist, I hold that very, very high because First Amendment is dealing with freedom and dealing with liberation, and I fight for that. And every citizen in this city is entitled under the Constitution to their First Amendment right and their freedom of speech. You, and I guess a lot of people would think that we should be happy that you are letting the list stay as to where people can sign other people up and everything's like that and things like that. Well, that's a concession, but I would say, I'm not really happy. I can't be happy as long as your employers, which is the citizen of this city, you are the employee. They should come first in every aspect of your job description and your job performance. To put the citizens at the end of this list, to make them sit here and wait throughout the, and endure the whole city council meeting, when every citizen in here who is your employer should come first and be at the top of that list to whatever comments that they have to make. So I, I, you know, I'm not really happy. I'm, I'm glad for other people that you allowing the names to stay up there so other people can sign them in, but my position here as mayor, when it comes to First Amendment, because the fact to me is, putting the citizens back at the bottom of the list because of something that you didn't like, for me, that still smells and sounds of First Amendment suppression and discouragement. And in no form or fashion do you have the right to suppress and to discourage the First Amendment right of any citizen of this city who paid the taxes for you to sit in that seat that you're sitting in. So I'm just hoping that the citizens, when it come election time, remember who is the employer here and who is the employee. And sir, you are the employee of these citizens, and you should have them first in everything that you do.
Hello, I'm Dylan Blake from the Fourth Ward. And I would like to thank my Alderman, David Vialobos, for showing up at the Clean Power Luncheon on Thursday. As a constituent from your ward, I wanted to thank you for your leadership in starting the discussion of renewable energy. As a fellow member of Clean Power of Lake County, I believe your invitation to start talking about the transition plan to revitalize the lakefront is a key element to achieve Waukegan into becoming a green town. I look forward to continuing the dialogue of renewable energy in our city.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Joel Williams. I'm the executive director of Pads Lake County and a proud Waukegan resident in the Eighth Ward. Today was one of the more difficult days in my professional career. This morning, I thought that I had a very good and productive meeting with representatives from the city about what we could do in order to make this a better community, come to mutually agreeable solutions to perceived problems. We seemed to both seek an answer that would benefit everyone and importantly, be right and just. After that meeting, within two hours, I was served with a notice that our business license had been suspended. We were no longer able to serve our clients. That also meant that everyone needed to vacate the building immediately. It meant that they would miss their appointments. It meant that they had to wander the streets with all of their vulnerabilities. This included an elderly woman with dementia. This included a young woman with her newborn child in an infant carrier. This included a man with a severe physical disability who has trouble walking now on the streets. It was difficult to see clients crying because the one thing that they had that they felt they could count on, Pads being there to help them, was no longer certain through nothing that we did. It was very difficult also to see my staff cry with this feeling of helplessness. While we are obviously disappointed with the decision, I'd say that we are equally disappointed in the process that it came about. Surprise shutdown was, would be something that would seem to quell any notion that this might be done with a spirit of cooperation. We still want to work cooperatively to better our community. Now, however, we have to go through this unnecessary and antagonistic by its very nature process in order to have this appeal. It is unfortunate and disappointing. We do look forward to the opportunity to resolve this once and for all, and we do hope to resume a cooperative relationship in the future to serve our most vulnerable residents. I know that we can do better, and I look forward to working with all of you to make sure that we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Margaret Carrasco. Tonight, I am here to personally say, thank you. Thank you to our Waukegan, Mayor Motley. Hundred Waukegan businesses also say thank you, Mayor. Thousands of Waukegan residents, taxpayers, homeowners in the area also say thank you. After, thank you for listening to hundreds of complaints that have been made for the past three years and have been recently escalating day by day. Tonight, I brought with me several pictures, one of hundreds of pictures that we have of, we feel violations of unneighborly incidents taking place at Pads. And I'm just thrilled to see the outpour of support for Pads. From other towns! You know what, Mayor? It's time to give those other communities that opportunity to support Pads as we have for so many years, such as Libertyville, Mundaline, Lake Forest. We shouldn't be selfish. It's time for us, for them, to also share in the opportunity of every day having to deal with littering, garbage in your, in your yards, urinating in public, and let's not forget about your businesses also. I'm sure Lake Forest businesses would love for Pads clients to use their restrooms to take showers, to be dealing with drugs, or hanging out and having to deal with them in their parking lots with other obscene incidents. Sexual offenders confronting their students, their children, I'm sure that really go over very well in the western suburbs. So Mayor, we want residents of Waukegan say thank you. According to the manual of Pads, it says on Tuesdays and Thursdays, just so the western suburbs will know that wherever they move to, that they give out dispensed drugs and medications. Let the other communities share with expensive thousands of dollars of every single day, police cars, emergency ambulances, squad cars, um, here are the many buses that come in from Chicago and other communities, shipping people into your community, or better yet, this is the vehicle that brings people from the state of Wisconsin. We are not against homeless. We feel it's our responsibility, every community's responsibility, and guess what? It's your time now.
Thank you. Rhodes Bushman. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Mr. Bushman?
Go ahead, next.
Good evening, Mayor Motley and staff. This is regarding the Pads Shelter. We've been in business for several years now, for over about twenty years now, and my dad and my brothers, you are present with me as well. As we say, many of you have gone in for breakfast or lunch, and to be honest with you, we're just tired of the panhandling and garbage around people that walk in into our washrooms. We feel bad saying no to them, but we still like yell out from every now and then, but when our customers come across needles and blood on sinks, it's, you know, very disturbing us. After a while, like I said, we've never had this issue in the past. Back then, we knew who our homeless people were, and we took care of them. It doesn't hurt us to give out an egg sandwich or two, but after a while, when people come in there and bother customers that are sitting down for change or stealing money, we've come across, we have, uh, video footage of, where people walk in from right down the block, and they come and sit down where they see money's at, and they kind of just put it into their pockets. We don't really like calling the cops. We don't like violence either, but yet again, it gets very frustrating when, you know, we have no, nowhere to, to look for. I mean, we come here to say that we're actually tired of that. We don't like to complain. We don't like to bother nobody, but we don't like to be bothered as well. Well, I mean, we're open to any questions that you guys, and we'd like to thank Mayor Motley for taking action, you know, and about our concern to other aldermen as well.
Thank you.
You know, even, I don't know, maybe my English is not too good, but, um, there is any way, I don't have nothing against, you know, the gentleman he says, you know, about the, the, the shelter or whatever, the, you know, the ladies on the street, but you see, maybe he's in his office, and he didn't see the people walking on, on the business. See, you, you see, you didn't see that, and we saw it in our business. But, you know, there is a lot of empty places. There is a Johnson Motors right there, there's a big building, there's a Kmart building that's empty in there. There is a big building right by the Lewis, but it used to be a Gonzalez. There's a big building, why you putting it right in front of our, our business? They hooding our business, and there's kids right there, you know, there is a family, you know, right in Indiana, there is a family houses in there, and these guys, I don't know whether, everybody is an adult too, they doing sex in the car, they doing hand jobs or whatever to the other people, you know, sorry to say that, but I, we have to talk straight. You know, and the people got tired, you know, chasing with the little kids to the school, and you know, they-
Yuri Karvahar.
They start complaining about it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to say thank you to all of you who show up on the Clean Power Lake County Meeting and Waukegan Public Library. Thank you so much for your presence, your support. Thank you, number one, to my Alderman, Sam Cunningham, to be present, and all the members of Lake County Board, and also to recognize as well that we all deserve better air, better water. I see all the records and, and videos, how the water being polluted in other places in, in Afghanistan and nearby, you know, those countries, and I really don't would like to see that, that happen to our lake. So thank you so much for taking action, and I appreciate that if we continue the conversation with Clean Power Lake County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Alice Neff Brown. I've been in the city since December second, nineteen sixty-nine, when I got married at Trinity AME in the south side to my second husband and had two children right here at Victory Memorial Hospital. They are now forty-four and forty-five. They are both in Iowa, the state of my birth. I was here every darn minute in Lake County, sometimes in North Chicago, once in Park City, mostly in Waukegan, all of that time, and I was here to speak about the parking ordinance on my own behalf. But earlier, I got a call from Dr. Mary Lacy, who is very ill, and she cannot appear at this time, and I'm going to speak for her on this Pads issue because she happens to have the only homeless mission in the whole county for nearly forty years she has been helping the homeless, only in that site maybe the last twenty-eight years or so, but she has gotten very little help from City Hall. Mayor Savanjan, who preceded Mayor Motley, who was Officer Friendly at Carmen when my elder son was in first grade at Carmen, by the way. I've known Wayne Motley for a very long time. I'll be eighty in September, that's only six months, and I have just got the yellow thing because my right hip is dislocating, so I can't keep up with your parking ordinances and your towing thing, and the twenty-two-page convoluted parking thing that went in, and the only Alderman here who was then Alderman was my Alderman, Sam Cunningham, Alderman Tenpass, and he were the only two at that time. None of the rest of you were here when that thing was passed. I read all of the twenty-two pages. It's the dumbest, most convoluted, most self-contradicting ordinance I have ever read, drafted by a bunch of idiots apparently, and it's been there governing all the poor people. Mostly, you get tickets to the people from Wisconsin who don't know you can't park overnight between two and six AM in the morning, right? Maria issued me the only permit to park between two and six AM just the other day, and she didn't want to issue to me. She charged me twenty dollars because that's what the ordinance says. I paid it. She didn't want to get it because she says, "We're going to change that anyway." And that's ex post facto, by the way. You can't change it just for me. If I'm the only darn fool that ever bought one since two thousand and eight, you cannot change that ordinance just for me. That's not only in the nineteen seventy Illinois Constitution, it's in the U.S. Constitution, for God's sake. Anyway, you should not be closing Pads. Waukegan has not been good to the homeless ever. Originally Mayor Savanjan, and I was here, his way to handle, I'm sorry, I turned off my phone. Mayor Savanjan, the original Mayor Savanjan-
Thank you, ma'am.
We have no homeless anymore.
Thank you, ma'am.
He always would have the-
Thank you, Alice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they're from Milwaukee or Shakata.
Ivan Brockic.
And you all know that.
Ivan Brockic.
And I'm old for time, I'm sorry. And all the time I practiced it all was pro bono.
Thanks, Alice. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Ivan Brasic from Waukegan Medical and Rehab. We're located adjacent to the Pads complex, and it's been quite the whirlwind, whirlwind that we've experienced since the entire organization has come through. Let it be known that there's, I don't think there's anyone here that's opposed to the services that are being rendered to the homeless and those that need the care. The challenge is that it's just not properly located. Our, our clinic has hypodermic needles that are scattered. I have feces in my parking lot. I chase people away, they're, they're having sexual relations in my parking lot at night. My business has gone down over forty percent. We've lost an entire population of yoga. We had about twenty to twenty-five women that were coming in, and overnight, it just, it just stopped. The only person that was coming was a police officer because, of course, and it was the one male that was there. Our, our residents need this service, there's no question. However, our businesses and the Retanas, I've known Juan and the family for decades since I first came here. They welcomed me, they're great folks. Everyone's worked very hard, as do you, and we've just seen our community just take a dive. Our business is down. If I, if I must, I'll abandon the building, and I'll just have to let it go because we've got literally six thousand square feet with about thirty parking spaces. We've taken that building, and as you know, inside, we've rehabbed it tremendously. We were looking at doing an exterior renovation this year, but we've just held off because we have to make sure that the numbers work. This is the third building that I've owned in Waukegan. I started on Grand Avenue on the corner of Grand and, and Lorraine, renting four hundred square feet, and by just giving good service and working with the Hispanic community, we've built a wonderful clinic. To just see it, in the past two years, it's just been going downhill. I, I plead that we work together to find them a new home, to allow them to continue their service, but to allow the majority of the businesses and the residences in the area to maintain the status quo that we experienced, that we've worked for, that we've built up over the years. So thank you for hearing this, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc. Thank you.
Alderman's time, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Vialobos.
Thank you. So, a couple of things I want to speak about. Number one, just want to bring up the volunteer opportunity for trash removal in downtown Waukegan this Saturday, April ninth, from ten AM to two, two PM. We'll be doing a staging location at the parking garage of Ace Hardware right down Grand and Genesee. I will be the point contact person, so if anybody's interested to volunteer, please contact me. You can reach me via phone, two one seven, seven six six, nine three nine zero, or email, D-L-O-B-O-S one zero one six at gmail dot com, or Facebook, starting to use that a little bit more now. So you can reach me by messenger on Facebook. So you got to friend me, I'll, I'll respond. So this will be a start of many other opportunities to help clean up downtown Waukegan. I actually want to take this and move this initiative to Washington Street with some other business owners, and eventually Grand, so little by little, hit all the businesses and make them look nice. Secondly, Lions, Little Fort Lions Club has announced their date for their Pancake Breakfast, the annual one. It's going to be at Bonnie Brook Golf Course on Sunday, May twenty-second, from eight AM to one PM. Tickets are fourteen dollars. I have tickets for sale if anyone's interested. Also, sponsorship is available too. Also, sponsorship is available too, and it's $125 for sponsorship. So, if anyone's interested, please contact me too regarding that. Next, I'd like to say thank you to Clean Power Lake County for hosting a wonderful event last week, Thursday, at the Waukegan Public Library. There were many individuals there of notes. We had State's Attorney Mike Nierheim present, our mayor, Mr. Motley here, should have put you first, but that's okay. Maria Clerk, Maria LaCura, our city clerk, Nita Hannon from the school board, Aaron Lawler from the Lake County Board, as well as Mary Ross Cunningham from the Lake County Board, and another woman from the Lake County Board, who I forget her name. My fellow Aldermans, Ann Taylor, Lisa May, Sam Cunningham. It was just really good to see this turnout, and it was really good to talk about opportunities for the future for Waukegan. I'm excited about it. So, thank you, Clean Power Lake County, for hosting that event. And last, certainly not least, pads, right? So, this is the dialogue today, right? Did not expect to have this dialogue today. But hearing some of the residents speak, some of my own mentalities, the business owners, it's about kind of how we can work better together. Mr. Williams, you mentioned it, you want to work better with us, and we want to work better with you, I think. It seems to me like the kind of aggravation and frustration of the residents kind of came to a head. This response just kind of shows there's an issue, right, obviously. Finally, it's really come to the forefront and the spotlight. So, actually, I see this as an opportunity to figure out, what do we need to be doing to work better together? Dr. Brasic brings up a good point about location. Maybe it is the location. Maybe it's something as simple as that, that actually is going to alleviate all this that we have going on. We won't know until we investigate that option. But there's an option there, you know? So, I'm just very interested. I'd be happy to talk, see what I can do to help participate with finding a solution. You have my number, Mr. Williams, Joel? Yeah, just call me. I can come by tomorrow even. But it's, it's, it's a concern, right? I have a perspective that I have to carry, which is kind of true in a sense. On a personal note, I'm all-inclusive in my mentalities. How do I see the homeless? How do I include them in society? How do we move them forward, right? On the other side, I have my position as Alderman and representative of individuals within the ward. And my ward borders up against that, right? I'm on Grand Avenue. So, business owners, residents within the ward are affected by this. So, that's another perspective I have to keep in mind. How is this directly affecting them, which hasn't been positive? So, I have to find a balance between inclusiveness and a positive situation for the residents, right? And I think somewhere, there's an answer that lies in that. So, it's just very interesting today. I thank everyone for being present today also, and to voice your opinion and your thoughts about this situation. This is what the dialogue we need, actually, and continuously have, to move things forward in Waukegan, to find out better things for Waukegan, to not have Waukegan be second to anything else. There's, there's a lot we can be doing to work together, all right? So, once again, I just want to thank everyone for being here. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. Well, actually, I'm going to speak on pads as well. 1800 Grand Avenue sits in my ward. Prior to pads officially moving in, I started getting phone calls. And I've spoken with Joel regarding this, and the residents of that area, and the businesses, and it has gone down since then. We've talked about solutions, things that we needed to do. The residents started pleading with me, pleading with the mayor, pleading with police. What can you do about this? Everybody has a heart for the homeless. Nobody wants to see anyone out on the street. But everyone that comes to pads every day is not really looking for help. Because if they were, they would be inside getting assistance. They wouldn't be down the street, on another block, asking for money, cursing people out in the adjacent parking lot, doing all kind of things, sleeping in their cars. That was what started in the beginning. And we talked about this numerous times, numerous times. What are we supposed to do after almost two years of doing nothing, and it's getting worse and worse and worse? What are we supposed to do? Anyone that lives adjacent to that, oh, I'd say the question is, would you like that kind of thing going on next door to your house?
No.
Would you like that next door to your house? And then the mayor does nothing? The Alderman does nothing? The police can do nothing? No, you wouldn't want it there. They've been pleading with us. Shame on us if we don't do anything about it. Shame on us. That, that's what we were elected to do. To make the community better, to have everyone have a better quality of life. And that's what we're here to do. For the homeless as well. I feel bad for those that were there for service today and could not get it. But we know that everyone comes there, does not have an appointment. They're just bussed there for the day. And then they're not in pads. They're down the street panhandling at a lot of the businesses and cursing people out if they don't assist them with what they want. It's not just on my side of the ward, it's in all the other businesses along Grand Avenue. It doesn't stop at Lewis Avenue, it goes west of Lewis Avenue as well. So, for us to sit on our hands and do nothing, shame on us. We're willing to work with Mr. Williams and come up with a solution, as we've talked about, even after the last council meeting. We sit down three days after the council meeting, and we went over solutions. I started getting more calls even after the meeting. And I'm thinking, "Well, we just had a meeting. Something should have started working, getting into place." And security, I know that you said you had security guards there. Some of the residents would tell me, "Well, the security guards, they come down, they'll check the parking lot, they'll stand at the corner." They wouldn't go and do what they're supposed to do. And the residents that live there, they know better than anybody else what's going on. The businesses there know better than anybody else what's going on. And for me to hear from them, after almost two years, we had to do something. We had to do something. Should have had to come to this, I'm not, I'm not sure. But we got to work on a solution. Because Waukegan pads is not supposed to be a shelter. It's supposed to be a resource center with administrative offices to assist the homeless, not a shelter for you to stay at all day and up until the evening. So, those are my comments. I'm willing to work with you, Joel. You can always email me, you can call me. I've been over to pads, I've seen things that are going on there. And I, I, I really have not liked some of the things that I've seen in there, and some of the things that I've heard from some of the residents that have been assisted there, that have come out of there and said what was going on. That's, that's working outside of the scope of your business license. And that's working outside of what we were told in the beginning, that what was going to be done at 1800 Grand Avenue. So, like I said, I'm willing to work with you and any of your staff. Some of them I've come over there and met. But we have to do something to curtail, curtail all this activity that's going on up and down Grand Avenue, and that is affecting some of the businesses there. Those are my comments.
I'm going to pass.
Alderman Valco.
Pass.
Alderman Taylor.
Pass.
Alderman Cunningham.
Couple of things. One, tonight, we vacated Jensen Court. Jensen Court is a small street on South Avenue between MLK and Caroline. I think about 17 years ago, is Mike still here? Oh, Mary, you on, on the board then? About 17 years ago.
It was a drug health.
It was a drug-infested area in, in, in the first ward. Researching some of the calls, over 50% of our police calls would come from this small area here. The Park District at that time made a great investment by not only buying those homes and extending the park. The fire department then used it as a training ground, and we got rid of some, some major problems. And now, this is the butt-in of that particular project by vacating that. For those who do not know, I don't think we're going, we're not going to remove the street, we're just vacating it as an actual street for the city of Waukegan to maintain.
An entry to the park.
Entry to the park. So, that's great. Now, hopefully, we get some parking spots off that. So, kudos to the Park District, and obviously to us. I think enough has been said about the pads' location. What I want to do is commend the businesses for bringing their voices to the right people in order for some sound decisions to be made. And I think in the, as the future as we go on about this, I think we'll come up with a resolution. But kudos to the business community who were able to bring their concerns to the right people to make the good decisions. And I'm going to say this out loud, because I eat there probably more than anybody else, the Wines Chuck Wagon, if he wants the best grits in the city of Waukegan. I'm saying it, and I'm a grit eater and a grit maker. Go there. But, but thank you, sir. It's nice seeing you and your family. What a great, great scene for a dad and his, and his sons, and that beautiful daughter, and how hard they work. That is the essence of the city of Waukegan right there. So, congratulations to you, sir. Margaret, kudos to you for bringing that up in your way, of course, in Margaret's own special way. Last but not least, I know I commented tonight on, on the Sundance and, and what they're doing. You know, I love the way that our Fountain Square, I can remember back to the days of Lakers. And Lakers was the new mall of the century, and we brought it here. And, and now the Fountain Square, I had a reservation because it was an emotional attach to me for Lakers. Now, the Fountain Square is, is where it's at, and the way, the way it looks, the aesthetics of it, I'm just not, I'm not a fan of it. Maybe I got to get used to, you know, buildings being in the front. That's just me. But I do want to say this. I noticed that the Shaw people, they're doing a great job of developing their properties. I think we have about 35 acres of our properties that were, when I say ours, the city of Waukegan, of course, that was slated for development, that was slated for casino. Well, I'm here to tell you, casino was not coming. That, that, that boat has gone and, and gone, it's going to be gone forever, particularly now that we have the machines. I think it's time we start looking at our property, Shaw. You know, and I'm not a fan of them, this $110,000 we have to pay to cut grass. I don't know about you, but Tom Hare got some of the best equipment on the face of his earth to cut that grass out there. And it's a lot less than $110,000. So, Shaw, I'm looking for you as you're spirited about the stuff that you own, look about the stuff that we own. We need more tax dollars out there, just like you trying to build your stuff. That's, that, that money, if it's part of the bond, is, we still got bond out there, right, Tina?
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure Tina could take that money to pay off those bonds. So, Shaw, SOS, now this, this, look at those 30 acres. I'm sorry, Dave, you said 35? 35.9 acres. Start looking at that to develop. We need the money. And that's an awesome corner site for somebody to come. Thank you.
Alderman Ziegler. Alderman Ziegler.
I usually don't say much, but you know what, Margaret? I thank you for bringing this up about pads. I really do. This is an issue that we should have probably addressed a year ago. We knew it was coming, okay? Now, we got to stop it. I don't like to see anybody homeless. I don't like to see anybody hungry. I want to help people. That's what I was elected to do. This is part of it. I want everybody to know. Things can change just like that, just like that, overnight. How would you like to live out on, on the street? But sometimes, it gets carried away, overdue. Now, we have people coming in, into Waukegan from outskirts. What about Libertyville? Mundaline? What about North Chicago? Zion? Went to Parbor. Why don't they take the load? We, we have to carry it and take the blame for it? Take the fall? No. Okay, Margaret, thank you very much. And I'm going to look into this furthermore. In other words, I'm on board.
Alderman Moizio. Alderman Moizio.
I think enough has been said about the pads situation. So, with that, motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Valco, to discuss purchase of real estate and pending litigation. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're back from executive session. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Ziegler.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Here.
Okay, here's, here's the motion as presented. Resolution to authorize the proper city officials to modify the authorization granted by the city council on June 15th, 2015, city council meeting authorizing the purchase of property commonly known as 200-300 C-Hurst Drive, Waukegan, Illinois, 60085, pin number 0822100062, from the Knight Holdings LLC, to indicate the purchase price of $525,000 to proper city officials, and further to authorize the execution of a settlement agreement of the following litigation. The City of Waukegan plaintiff versus Knight Holding LLC, defendant Knight Holding LLC, counter plaintiff versus the City of Waukegan, counter defendant, case number 15CV9622. The settlement agreement requires no further monetary expenditures and shall be settled by completion of the purchase of the property by the City of Waukegan. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. This just has to do with the purchase. How, how we purchase is up to you.
Alderman Villalobos. I say yes, wholeheartedly. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Ziegler.
No.
Alderman Moizio.
Six to two, motion passes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Motion adjourned by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Valco. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The city of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information, or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629, or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.